Well, the mayor's gonna be a little late, so I think we'll do it and get this meeting started. We'll call it to order and welcome guests and join us in the pleasure of the evening.
United States of America is a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion approved the agenda? The updates. Oh, sorry. All in favor of approving the agenda?
Aye.
Alright, police chief.
He is not well.
Fire chief.
Yeah, I got three items here. First one involves, I had invited electricians to come down. I put a work order in to hook up our hot seat washer. They came down to look at it. As it knows to me, they informed me that they're not able to work on 110 stuff because they're not certified electricians. Now, they can play with the big, big boy wire, but they can't technically do an electrical outlet. That's pretty sad if we gotta contract somebody to change an electrical outlet. So, I've put that up for discussion. Uh, the next thing is, we had a call this evening and we had to wait on an on-call person. Uh, it could have been bad if that wire, if any more damage had been done to that wire. So, I'd like to have that visited too. Last thing on my list is, I'd like to visit with the representatives for the Public Safety Committee. I know you've got a meeting Monday night. I can't be there, but there is a very big important issue that needs to be brought up amongst, before those people that you'll, I would like for you to discuss with them. I think you're on there, aren't you Darren?
I don't know. I think it was on the list you gave me. It says Earl, John, and Dan. Well, it's not John, but it's the mayor and myself. I think he appointed Jake.
Well, I think it's on the agenda to make those appointments tonight. Just after me, if we have time, I'd like to visit with you and bring it up before you.
Thank you. Yeah, it's on the list that you left for tonight.
Oh, I don't think the rector, rector's having one here. Main Street. DC, DC. Any public comments?
I have, I have a couple. I wanted to acknowledge and thank the work that you did and the mayor did on Santa's house. Um, I don't know if anybody's thanked you for that, but that's long overdue and we appreciate it. The second thing was, I had trouble finding and could not find the council agenda for tonight's meeting. Where's the place that the public should be able to go the day of the meeting and find the agenda?
It should be on the website.
I found the supervisor's minute of agenda in 15 seconds and I'm looking for it. It's on the, I think Bloomfield memo site.
And so, so was this. It was put on a little later.
Oh, I looked for it at about 15 minutes till nine this morning and couldn't find it.
I think Scott put on the supervisors and then later I realized council wasn't on it.
Is that the place we should be able to go to get it every time?
Well, yes.
Yes, you can add it. It'll be on the city website.
Was it today?
Yes.
Normally, Don, we get it on hours, about 24 hours ahead of time, but that came in.
I didn't find it on the city website either.
And I didn't go up to the office yesterday. They didn't put it on, so.
There should be one reliable site we can go to every time and find the agenda of the day of the meeting without fail.
You also have one in the office.
Yeah. Yeah, there's always one customer.
Well, but that doesn't help us. You know, that's why we pay $17,000 a year for these things.
Let me see. Hey, let me see.
A little later this morning. Okay, I looked about 8:30 quarter till nine.
You need to sleep in later.
Call the guys, want to know what's going on.
Anyhow, thank you for the work. Is it up? That's, that's worth looking into though. We'll make sure it's on the website. Thank you. It should be.
Anything else? Full business. Discussion and decision regarding Babe Ruth baseball field.
Mr. Mayor, there, there was, I know someone made contact with the mayor from the Babe Ruth organization and that was an item that was added relatively to the agenda, so I, I'm not aware if there are representatives here or not.
Yeah. Do you want me to turn it to start? So, I, I, I know, uh, the last time we left off, the, the item or the idea was whether I was gonna end up getting some money from the DC Foundation, so I got it. So, I got $32,500, a little over, um, for the field. So, I mean, I guess the main thing I'm looking for is just, uh, I did go to the fairgrounds too, uh, a couple of months ago and see if we can get some extension on keeping that field for another year or two. And, um, they came back about a month or so ago and said, no, they're not gonna give us an extension. So, we've got about 18 months before we lose that field. Um, that's what we, that's the timeline we're looking at. So, my position, which I, I know I've learned through this before, is to obviously put this field out at the West Sports Complex with baseball, with the high school baseball field and the softball baseball field and share those concessions, share the parking, share the utilities. Share mobilization costs that the school's gonna absorb. Have that be a, you know, partnership between the city and the school, so the school can use that field when they need it, when Babe Ruth is not using it, and vice versa. Babe Ruth can use the high school field for tournaments or various different, you know, activities. So, um, the main thing I'm looking for, I guess, is just to be blunt, as obviously we're looking for funding. Uh, there's also a business in town that is, is still interested in, in, in helping fund that, but they obviously want, um, they want the ducks to be in a row before they are able to commit to that. They want the city and the county and the school and everybody to get along and they don't want to be, I think, this is kind of my thought here, but I don't, I don't think they really want to be getting into it with, there's gonna be a bunch of, you know, craziness about where the field goes and everything like that. So, we've got funding already. Uh, we've got a business, I think, is willing to step up. We got funding coming from next year, but really what we need is some funding from the city and the county. Just want to get this thing moving and, and really it needs to be built this, this summer. I mean, that's when, uh, that's when the schools are gonna be putting their field in. It's gonna be cheaper to build this summer. Um, I was there. So, it's, you guys just count a decision, but I'm just trying to put it.
Do you still have the support from the supervisor?
I haven't been to supervisor meetings since the last time I've been here, but I, I got, we got that letter of support that I sent.
I was told by a supervisor yesterday that they're no longer supporting it.
Well, they sent me a letter that said that they were supporting it, so, yeah, official letter of support. I guess, is it one supervisor? Is that many? I'm sure there are probably one of them on that would be opposed.
It was determined after supervisor meeting.
Well, I need money from you extra then. I guess I need more money from you than I thought.
How, how much is more money?
Well, my thought was to get 30 from you guys and 30 from the county. And that would get us to about $100,000 just between us and the, and the loan and, or the, uh, the DC Foundation money. That's enough frankly right there to get the, the field built, not unlit. And then depending on, again, I don't know what kind of private funds we can get from, from businesses in town, but that's gonna depend on that. We can also go back to DC Foundation next year for more money and really the year after that for more money. I think the Trails has put a pretty good, uh, deal together where they've been able to go there two, three years in a row. I think that foundation is, as long as you're doing something good and you're showing progress, that foundation is pretty solid as far as backing it if you go by your deals. At, at this point, it's really just, so, this is, it needs to be made because they're losing that field 18 months.
Joe, can you provide, uh, like a detailed plan of what you think the total cost would be, what the cost would be for the, give us a better idea of the work?
Sure. Um, I, I do have a, a, a plan that I basically got from, uh, Michelle Huggins. So, I mean, that, that plan is a three-year plan, but really the third year is like some playground equipment and stuff like that. But, I mean, essentially it's a field and then lights. That's the main. And again, all I have is what I'm going off of her, so that doesn't necessarily mean that the field is gonna cost what she says it's gonna cost. It costs more for all I know, but I mean, I, I think we could probably get under what she thinks. She's got $100,000 for lights. I think we could probably do better than that, but that's not what I do for a living, so I don't, you know, I don't know. Can't say that's not gonna be, that's not right, but, um, it gets you that. But it's essentially field, $100,000, lights, $100,000, basically what they have.
So, you have a monetary number from the private business in mind?
I don't. Again, I think they're, I don't want to put words in their mouth, but I, I think they're just wanting, they, they, before they start funneling money to us, I think they want there to be consensus amongst the city and the county and the school and all of us before we say, oh, I'm gonna give you a bunch of money, which I don't understand. They're not gonna give us a bunch of money and, and, and we don't know what plan is. So, there's still support there. I met with them just weeks ago, I think, before I came here, because I wanted to let them know, yeah, I'm, I'm gonna be coming to the, you know, the council meeting this year. Still support there, but again, it was more like, hey, let's, let's get, figure out what we want to do and figure out what plan is. Last time we talked to, we, we talked about getting a, a, a written agreement put together between the city and the school. But, you know, there were some issues with the, you know, concessions, who's gonna get concessions? And, you know, want to make sure that the city and the, and the Babe Ruth League protects itself, that the school, you know, that the Babe, that the league has ownership over that field. And when the school would like to have it, if Babe Ruth isn't using it, they can use it and all those, you know, cross all those T's and dot all those I's, but I think that's too what the business wants too, is for that to happen. I, I think that's the best way moving forward is, is we just throw some support to this. We get a meeting set up here in the next couple of weeks between the school and the city and county and whomever. We hash out what those details are gonna be and we start moving forward. But unfortunately, we don't have a lot of time at this point, one way or another. You know, if you don't want there, figure something out.
Mr. Mayor, just one comment, I, I bought from you and the other council members, but I, I have received paramount correspondence from people that were on this committee anyway, and they feel like they're being left out in the dark. So, when you're talking about adding stakeholders, I believe there is a committee formed as well. Probably should take their participation.
I think the committee probably needs to get together and meet before there's any, and come up with a plan to get support. I'm not in support of it out there. And I'm just gonna tell you right now, I am not in support of it out there because this concession stands clear across the way from it. It's not been, it doesn't benefit the Babe Ruths like it should being out there at all.
Well, like I said, the thought between the, the Babe Ruth Committee and obviously myself is that to have all those fields out there in one spot is gonna be better than putting the Babe Ruth field out like Fisher out by itself on gravel roads and, and you gotta, you gotta put, you gotta, now you gotta, now you gotta do something with concessions. There are no concessions out there. There's hardly any parking out there. Pretty much the whole field would have to be redone. You're gonna have to pay somebody to come in and do all that dirt work. School's gonna pay for all that. School's gonna give you free land. It doesn't make any sense to put it out there.
School's not gonna give you anything.
They're giving you free land, sure they are. But they're, they're gonna want to use the field, don't get me wrong. They, they, they're gonna want to benefit out of it, but they're not. They're not gonna just.
See what the agreement says.
That's what we need, but we gotta, somebody has gotta put a step forward because they keep coming here and it's, it's, it's the same thing where it's come back and give us this or come back. We just need to move forward with it, make a decision on where you guys want to put it. The 32,000 is at the West Sports Complex. That's what I, that's the, that's the grant that I wrote, so as far as I know, that money is not going to Lake Fisher.
I think what might be helpful, kind of to Scott's point and Andy's point, what might be helpful is whatever you submitted with the grant, I presume there was a budget and some sort of plans. You could maybe get that handy and you could circulate it to the members of the committee. I, just for me personally, one of five, I go back to, um, I'd like to see it part of, I, if the city's gonna pay for it, I'd like to see it in city limits. And so, I, and I'm, that might, we might be able to do that by annexation. That's one. And then the other is making sure that the way it's financed, we don't have city taxpayers paying twice. Those are the two. And then my third thing, big picture, not so much with you folks, but just more with the school district. Then I'd like to see what could be done out there in terms of city apartment, you know, an overall sports complex kind of thing. But the, the two big issues that I just, when it comes back to the council that I would be interested in are I'm gonna have a problem if it's not in the city and I'm gonna have a problem if the city residents are paying twice through the county millage and the city.
That, that, I did address that with the, with the county supervisors and they did tell me that, that the pot that they would take their money out of is, and I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not a city government.
Rural fund.
It's a rural fund.
Rural fund, so it, it, it comes out, it's.
County money only.
Yeah, it's county money only. So, so people live in town and the county aren't, aren't paying twice for it. It's the same bucket that they pay like the counties or deputies and sheriffs. I think that part is, is pretty much been put to bed, but, um, my idea would be like for the second year, we'd go back and get some money for, for lighting and whatnot, and then third year, we would put some kind of a playground out there, year three.
Yeah, and that doesn't necessarily have to all be on Babe Ruth. That could be like a joint effort amongst everybody, but that's, I'm not necessarily personally, I'm not necessarily wed to Lake Fisher, but it does, it's a little bit of a concern for me if it's, if it's not in the city.
And that West Sports Complex, is that not in the city?
It does, appears to be right on the edge, but I don't know if we could annex it or not.
City, land stops, entrance to the fairgrounds.
But I don't know that that's necessarily, for me personally, that's not something I'd have to see for it to get off the ground. I think probably the plan, the stuff Scott was talking about, the plans and stuff, getting that to Andy to get to the committees.
Well, I think if you want this to move forward, you're gonna have to get all the parties in a room together.
Yeah.
Well, it's hard for us to commit 30,000. And then how do you not know that next year you're not gonna have, have another 30 and the next year have to have another 30 and the next year have to have another 30? I mean, that's not 30 no more.
Well, if we can get support, that, here's the thing, if we can get support from the county and the city, i- if, if nothing else, just a written, verbal, whatever, to get that group together, then we can kind of understand how much we can get from a private party. But until then, it, it's kind of like we can't do one without the other. There has to be some kind of a good face support from our governments.
Apparently you've got an idea how much they're gonna give because you was able to say a $200,000 project, you was gonna spend 40 on a grant and 30 from the city and county, so apparently you've already got them tagged for 100,000.
No, I, I don't. It's, it's a, it's 30, it's 30 from the, from the foundation. If I got 30 out of you and 30 out of the county, that gets us to roughly about $100,000. That leaves us with 100,000. We can go back to the DC Foundation next year for another 30 to 40,000. And whatever the business can give us, if that's, if that's 50, if that's 60, if it's 20, um, but as far as coming back year after year, I, I just really don't see that happening. Because for one thing, I, I think we can get this done at 200,000. That's just my personal opinion. But I, so I think if, if we can get close to 100,000 dollars in the first year, I, we're, we're really very close.
Well, I think we're all in support of needing a ball field.
And I think we've given you a letter of support.
I think we just need the committee to get together and come up with some discussion to decide where it's gonna be and how much and what's it gonna cost this year, next year, the next year, so that.
I think that just goes back to what Scott was asking for. I think if you can get that together, what you already have, you can get that Andy, Andy can get that to the committee.
So, when you, okay, so just when you say committee, what committee?
We have, we have a committee forum to look at this, right? Don't we? Yeah, we have a committee forum.
Can we put something on the, on the calendar? Uh, one time we had something on the calendar. I kind of felt rude. Is, is that something that we can put on a, on a calendar in the next couple of weeks? And I get this to you tomorrow.
Yeah, I mean, I would suggest that and then let Andy get it to the committee members and then their schedules will sort of dictate. But it sounds like they're wanting to meet.
No, I mean, that's, that's the feedback I'm getting, Mayor, and as we're at least having the additional meetings, certainly that's, that's up to council mayor.
We have a meeting every Thursday through March. But I think the committee can do legwork before it's ready to come back to the council, is what I'm saying. I think that it's gonna be more efficient to work through the committee to address a lot of like the questions the mayor has and what Scott was asking about. I think that'll be more efficient.
The one they can just sit down and talk about ball field.
Yeah.
And not have, you know.
That's, that's fair. I might happen to get that stuff to you and then whenever the people on the committees, whenever their agenda's free up, then, then we can meet and, um, I'm, I'm good with doing that. And really, that's really what I was looking for tonight.
I think that we gotta move it forward.
Yeah, I mean, we, we just need to have some kind of a, a committee meeting to where we can at least start to determine the details of what we want to do. But I mean, ultimately, again, and I can't, I mean, it sound like a broken record, but we've got 18 months here before we don't have a field at all.
Let me raise your point. I, we get back before it's not, we shouldn't be back again.
Yeah, I think that's, and send this to, uh, Andy.
Yep.
I'll get it to you.
Thank you for helping with the grant.
That worked. Thanks.
Thanks, guys.
Yep. Approved pass number six to Lawson Construction for work completed on the proposed water main and wastewater improvements, Division One, CDBG Project 18WS, 26, in the amount $48,406.92.
Um, really, this is all work that was done through, uh, November and the first week of December, getting all the patch and getting everything cleaned up. So, this is really all the water main work that's in the ground. The only thing we'll have left next spring is a little bit more sidewalk and final cleanup and seeding. So, everything is active and connected, so really the water main portion of the work is complete.
Sidewalk and seeding, you said, do you think?
And it looks like overall, we're gonna be really close to the original contract number of, within a couple thousand dollars of the 500.
Motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Approved payment of the following invoices for HR Green General Services, $1484. CBD Sanitary Sewer, $16,412.50. North Street Paving Project, $10,000, and Asshole Project, $10,000.
Plus the East Street Bridge, and it brings you back to the one we declined to pay.
There is a memo in there from Larry complaining that, um, that isn't actually, um, work on culvert. It's actually the sewer. The project was just called down.
They was tied together because they was gonna have somebody here overseeing. They was just gonna do a vote?
Yep.
And I think.
I've done that before.
That's just, it's part of the inspection. It's no desire. Motion to approve. No move. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Approve council appointments for the following. The city attorney, I think that's a two-year contract. I think it starts the second year. Mayor approve Tim. White Darren again.
He gave that gavel up pretty quick.
Jake's going.
He didn't look like he was going.
Official news paper. Wish we had options, but I guess we don't, so. Bloomfield paper. Sean, Chief of Police. Fire Chief stands same. City Clerk, Treasurer, I don't really think we can appoint anybody for that position because I don't know that we have.
The, uh, City Clerk Treasurer, I think, I want to make sure we're not mixing and matching this with the Finance Manager.
No. We have to have a City Clerk. The Deputy Clerk sits in in the absence of City Clerk. Which is how we've been doing it in the past, using it being, since, um, since Gary left, that's how we, that's how we've been doing it, so. I guess until we do something more permanent on the administrator position, we'll probably just leave that. Yeah, at that point, we can appoint the City Clerk. Is that fine, Sandy?
Yeah.
And does that follow, does that fit in the rules?
All I know is you are required to have a City Clerk.
If the Treasurer was, not to interrupt, the Treasurer weren't attached, it probably would have been a little easier to diagnose. I understand that, but you're right, the City Administrator and City Clerk slash.
I would say your Finance Manager would be your Treasurer. I wouldn't want one of those either. That you are required by law to have a City Clerk.
Not everybody, right? They, they could still approve it tonight even though if it is specifically the Finance Manager, that person isn't on board yet. But you could still pass that memorialize that, I would think, pretty easily.
Is the concern that the ordinance says the City Administrator is the City Clerk? And then, so then when we fill that in?
We're not used. The 18A ordinance.
That's never been rescinded.
Huh?
It's never been rescinded.
Well, I mean, we're not used as far as, there's a lot, there's other ordinances that have it. Andy qualified. Well, that was mine. I was gonna appoint Sandy if that, until we.
If that, might as well. I would agree with that.
It's on his own.
It's not against what?
It doesn't create conflict then when we, if we appoint a permanent City Treasurer.
At that point, if we have to change something, we can.
That makes sense.
So, Sandy is the City Clerk. Anybody have any objections to them appointments?
Just me?
Just to you?
You're gonna get out, dude.
Do you want to vote on one at a time or are we okay to vote on all at once?
Okay, all at once? I'll move. Thanks.
Do you got a question, Earl?
No.
Okay.
No, this group, I'm, that's fine.
Alright. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Discuss and appoint board liaisons. Did he go up the list in here that's, that we have? Okay. Library Board. Big Jack was on the Library Board. Jake, you want library board?
Certainly.
And I usually just. Go on all of them in case somebody can't make it. I can show them here. Uh, parks and rec. Scott, you want to stay on that? Airport. Who was on the airport before? That's not online.
Gary was at one time.
Gary was at one time and then. You have to put in Chris Dorr.
Oh, he wanted to stay on the airport.
So.
As a citizen.
Yeah. But one of us, it's.
Does specify a number of them or just, well?
A liaison is just one. You're not a voting member. You're just there to be able to report back. Counsel and.
I don't fly, so.
I don't either. Well, I did it over tonight.
Andy, you want to be on the airport committee? That might be about as easy because they'll have some budget stuff you'll have to be involved in and.
Sure, that's fine.
Does that work?
Yep.
DC DC board. Jake, you want to be on that?
Sure.
If anybody's got any questions or any comments while we're doing this, let me know. We'll discuss it. I'm just kind of going off a little bit of last year and kind of evening things out a little bit. E nine one one. That's already been.
Earl was a voting member.
I'm a voting member.
So you wouldn't have to appoint a liaison if you don't want to?
Yeah, because that was that thing we did in December, Sean and Earl. And then Zach and Jake are alternates. Regional Services Agency. This says Hilbert. So Darren, you're.
Been going to it for two years. Never seen John there.
So Darren's on that. Historic preservation. Matt, you want to be on that?
Sure.
Mutler Center. Scott, you still? Main Street.
Who was the economic director to do that? Chris used to do it.
Chris was on, I looked into that today. Chris was on as a member long before he ever worked with the city. I've been on it for the last two years.
Okay.
Well, Chris was on the board.
Yeah.
But not in his capacity to.
No.
Got it.
Darren, you okay? You want to keep that or Jake, you want to do Main Street?
Darren does a little bit.
All right, Jake. Jake, you can have Main Street for. Public safety. That was you and me.
And there's a.
We had to have a third one. So you're good with staying on?
Yeah.
Darren, you want to do that instead?
Sure.
Area fifteen regional planning. Darren is on that before. You want to stay there?
Sure. Several of them meet consecutive times at the fire station. I don't know. Right as in ESA.
Every half hour.
We run, run into two or three meetings at a time.
DC DC revolving loan. Jake, since you're on the DC DC board, you want to do the revolving loan part there?
Sure.
All right. Is everybody okay with that? Motion to approve.
To approve.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Discuss and appoint department liaisons. This is, we had these at one time and.
We tried without them and.
Tried without them and I think we need to.
We need to go back.
Yeah. I guess my opinion of this is a quarterly meeting with the departments and the DPW or whoever's at that. Just, and then it gives the employee somebody to call and talk to if they've got an issue or something, I think it. So. Water. We haven't had these, so don't be afraid to raise your hands.
If you want me to do water, I will.
That's fine.
I've done gas in the past, so Todd and I have a.
Well, if you want to.
Working.
If you want to do gas, that's, we'll, we'll, we'll put you on gas.
Okay. You all okay, Todd?
Water. Scott, you want to do water? I'm going to do electric.
No.
Streets.
Darren's in the construction business.
Streets.
Sure.
Police.
I had police in the past.
You had police in the past?
Mm-hmm. If you want me to do it again, I'll do it again. I'm on the public safety and the E nine one one.
All right, let's, that'll work. We got wastewater and fire left. Jake, which one you want?
I'll be first.
Somehow I guess that's. Matt, you got wastewater between police and fire. All right. Is everybody okay with this? Scott got water.
Matt got waste.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
All we need is second.
All motion.
I'll second. I said everybody in favor.
Time to start out the year of a fast meeting. So we got a motion? We got a second?
Yes.
And we got it all in favor?
Yes.
Good. Discuss and appoint liaisons for internal committees. Is this, have we always had this? Is this something new?
No, we've, we've had people on the safety committee and, and, uh, electrical apprentice before. Audit committee. I've, I've been on the audit committee in the past. And basically that's looking at what the auditor had to say and, and, uh, bringing the report back, although they do that, so.
Doing the checkbook every month.
Yep. So.
I think we'll probably do two people committees on these in case somebody can't be. So Earl, you're on audit.
Okay.
Who else wants to be on audit?
Uh, Fitzmatthew House. And I died to the other ones, so I can't really say much.
All right, Matt, well. We've got a union committee, right? Really kind of already?
Yep.
So I don't, I think we'll just whatever, we'll leave that. You, me, Scott, Matt and Andy and. Our attorney. You know, Heather.
And I filled in while you worked there.
Yeah, and Darren filled in. Safety committee.
We got hired.
Hiring committee. This is a new one. In the past, whenever we got ready to hire somebody, we'd just, whoever kind of volunteered that. I thought maybe it'd be easier if we just had a couple, three people that worked on. A couple of the council will be on this because myself and Andy or whoever the person would be else would be on that committee. I just thought it'd be easier if we just had the couple of people that did the, was on the hiring committee for that.
Shouldn't it be a floating thing because there's conflict of interest?
Yeah, and we can move all that around. I mean, and this is just for, because we've got, I mean, we've had a committee for the police department hiring. For the last, me and Earl, Scott, I've been on that. This is just for the public works and. Of course, whoever is in charge of that, you know, you know, they're always on that.
Matt and Andy and I were just on the last one.
Yeah, and Matt and Darren was on the last one. So I guess I was going to recommend them to be on that committee. If that's okay with everybody. And then that puts everybody pretty much on one.
Mr. Mayor, I know you and I talked about zero today. Uh, the hiring committee is an example. Uh, it's, it's one of the committees that, that's. Put in perspective again a little bit. Uh, you and I talked about this today insofar as that when. Council is desiring to position, you, you well know, there are two positions we have right now. They're open, they have two viable candidates. How does the hiring committee then work? Themselves into that process, I guess, for lack of a better term. Are they making recommendations because of the?
They'll go through the resumes. They'll do, they'll narrow it down if there's narrowing down to do to whoever they feel is best. Do interviews and then bring a proposal to the council of who they think is.
So the com, the committee then, not the administrator, the committee then brings the recommendation to council or not?
But on that council, not only a couple of council members you have.
Well, I'll be on it and Andy will be on it. And then if, let's say it's somebody in the office. Sandy would be on it. If it was a public works, the DPW would be.
Sorry, thank you.
And if it's conflict of interest, we'll, we'll move the people, throw somebody else in, so.
So as far as council, it's Matt.
It's Matt. Safety committee. To be honest with you, this is the first year I've done these.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So what's the safety committee?
The safety committee is required, um, by our workers comp. They are to meet monthly and turn in their minutes. Um, they. Might teach you to use fire extinguisher, make sure everybody can do that and just different.
So that doesn't have to be a board committee or a council.
No, it doesn't.
Who's on right now?
I honestly can't tell you.
I'm not sure. It's been functioning since Ted left.
Danny had some meetings.
Danny probably had a ton. But usually the DPW that heads that up. Uh, yeah.
Yeah, the training is Ryan, I, you know.
Usually DPW kind of spearheads that, but.
I thought the DPW and the fire chief. Like that. Yeah. I heard you.
You heard that. You're welcome.
I'm not that old.
I heard you say yes under your breath.
I used to do it, so.
Safety committee will be, I'll fill this spot of the DPW till we get one.
I was going to say, I've been on it in the past, but usually they tell me when the meeting was and I'd show up and that's about all I did.
I'll, I'll sit in on it till we get a DPW hired.
I'm not messing about trying to hit my train of thought this weekend, so I should probably be out there.
Electrical apprenticeship. I'll be on that. Both of them are kind of.
Generation.
That's a new one. I want to talk about it a little bit. Anybody else? Jake, you want to be on electrical apprenticeship?
True.
Now, the electrical generation and distribution is, I added that. Because I'd like to have a committee that. Kind of look, help keep track of like. The solar and see what it's doing, where it's going. Keep up with some things that's coming down the pipe. And as far as the distribution part, you know, with our infrastructure starting to get. Work with alignment and. See where we need to go with how we need to get started in the process of getting our infrastructure. Work, you know, try to get it back up in shape a little bit. What's the way to go about it? And I thought it'd be easier to try to do that through a committee. Than it would be to try to hash it out in a meeting, so. I would like to be on that one. Scott, you want to be on that one?
Does Andy need to be involved with that, Scott?
My, no, my question on that one, Mayor, is, is that work up narratives to, you outline some line like solar. What I, what the council would all do is I'll put together a couple of just examples and then you all, I think they need to be defined.
I guess in my opinion, these committees. Myself and Andy probably are, would be included in. Most of them, if there's a question or a meeting or, I mean, I, I think it would just kind of be automatic. You know, we probably have the meeting in Andy's office.
And like the DPW.
Kind of, yeah. The DPW would probably be involved. I mean, I, I think, I guess, I guess I'm just thinking that them people would be involved automatically. Speaking of, I'm just trying to pick council members to be involved. But, I mean, yeah. And if there's. Any of these meetings that somebody thinks somebody else needs to be involved in, they need to contact that person and bring it up so that we can get it done. There's, uh, one other committee that I forgot. I didn't get it on here that we'll put, where I'm going to talk about it and we'll have to put it on the next meeting. Our housing and. Inspection incentive program. I'd like to, I want to, we'll put it together, a committee to come up with. A better plan, I guess, than what we've got for our incentives, make it a little bit clearer, detail a few things, come up with the inspection process. And all that kind of stuff on the new housing and then also work on, you know, rental properties and stuff like that, so. We can't do it tonight because it's not on here, but.
Yeah.
That's another committee that I would like to add. I think that would be a benefit. All right. Is everybody approve? Motion to approve.
Move to approve the last of the committee appointments.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Discuss future of Lake Fisher. I didn't know how to put it here, Andy. Just, I just want to talk about it, um. I know last year. They talked about doing a contract with somebody for mowing it for the hay. I think I got a phone call from that person that mows it. So the reason. The main reason he mows is because his life don't like looking at being the top. And he's not interested in paying money to mow it. And I think that's probably where we're at. So, I mean, I think he'll keep doing it or I'm sure we can find somebody to do it or we brush cut it or whatever, but. It's pretty rough. And there's a lot of obstacles and it's, there's a lot of work involved in mowing it. That's the main reason this is on here. I guess I just want general consensus. Are we, is it worth the effort of going out to try to get bids and get? Four or five hundred dollars out of mowing it or do we just? Let somebody mow it, they'll mow it. If they don't, we mow it.
I'm hoping they do because they mowed it enough that they know the obstacles that are there.
Oh, he mows the the east side there, south half, and then the center, the little parts between the, on the hill. The rest of it's, there's a little bit down below the spillway, you could maybe. That's the issue I have with, if you lease it to mow it, okay, the map says there's 57 acres. Well, you might be able to mow 20 of them. So you got somebody paying, you got somebody paying for acres that they're not getting, that you can't get to them and they're not.
If, if, if they're taking pay off, I wonder if it's cleaner to just have our city statute so we don't run into an issue of somebody seeing that and what if you offer?
I don't know that it's, I mean, the same guy's done it for how many years?
It's not a real high demand. As far as the rest of that, we'll be looking for approximately 57 acres to burn off the spring for training. So we'll take care of the first mowing. If you'd like.
Don't want to do it right now?
Huh?
Don't want to do it right now?
Today would have been a good day.
Yeah.
Might have got stuck, but.
So that's the main reason for that. And I know we talked last fall a little bit about doing some things out there. I just, I guess, want us to get that back on everybody's mind, everybody's mind to start thinking on that because I might think. Do some more discussing on the future of that. Maybe something about the crisis replacement kind of type of there. Yeah, there's some options and some things there to look at. I just suppose. The mowing of it was the biggest thing, but I want everybody to get it back on their mind, ideas or different things, just think about what they would like to do or could do or move forward in that direction. Anybody got anything else on the way? Prove claims.
I didn't get your message about that one item till I was on the way home, so.
And I think that's why I rejected.
We'll have to.
Because I had, because I had a question about it.
Don't reject them.
Is that number 19 down the list?
Close. No, it's, um. The landfill and for getting rid of the two houses.
Oh.
I guess I assumed when we took bids to get rid of the houses that that included getting rid of the house. I didn't know we paid the landfill on top of the bid to getting rid of the house.
I wouldn't have thought that either.
Yeah, that was a part of the contract.
That is my question.
Okay.
I haven't, that's why I figured I rejected it.
But that was, you know, it's been a long time since I got that.
I haven't seen it since. So that was, that was my question. Which one are you talking about?
The phone.
Yeah, I didn't bring it up.
The cell phone?
Yeah.
Not knowing past practices, I didn't bring it up as far as, is that a normal purchase? And the concessions, I'm not sure.
The concession is a return from the swimming pool. The phone got damaged and ruined during working hours and rain. And it was approved to get reimbursed before that person left. And it just never got done. And it actually finally completely quit. So that's why it's on there. It says. And it is past practice, well, being that there have been other phones replaced from employees that hurt them and break them at work.
Didn't have all the stories.
That's the, that's, yeah, but I'm like, it just says don't reimbursement. Why, what was the, what was it for? Yep, that was a, that's what it was for.
But we hope they all don't go out and break their phones.
No, we don't want them to drive over just because they need a new one, but that. Uh, I don't know when it was, September when it went out, power outage.
Well, yeah.
And it was raining.
Raining so hard, yeah. Yeah, okay. I'm good now.
Okay, that's when it happened and that's the reason for it.
Okay. I totally understand.
And it completely quit the other day and so I wanted, I approved and if you go ahead and get another one.
Okay.
Any other questions on the claims? Move to approve.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Prove. Public comments.
Good evening. My name's Steve Siegel. I used to be the union rep for Aspen Council.
What's your address, Steve?
That would be 411 North Court of Tumblon. 52501. Okay, so I was the rep for the union for 20 years from 94 to 2014. And I believe the union here was first of the city employees was first certified in 89. So this is nothing new. It's been around for 30 years. And in my time, I don't, I'm pretty certain before and even after, we've always had voluntary contract agreements. I don't think we've ever gone to arbitration. We have been few.
They've been perjury.
Agreements arbitration, not on the contract. So, as, as I'm sure you know, the legislature changed the law a couple of years ago, which limits mandatory topics of bargaining to just wages. But there's nothing prohibiting a city or a county or a school from continuing to bargain on another thing. And it's really a right, a matter of respect for your staff. There's most of, many of that I know that are here and I've been here for many years and done well. I can't, I can't. All right, wages, pay grades. But anyway, it's very limited. We'd like you, I'd like you to consider, I know you're going into bargaining now, to consider keeping everything in the contract like it has been so you continue to have good relations with your staff and show them the respect that they need and deserve. Just because you can do something, this meeting should do something. This is a system that's worked well for many years and I hope you'll continue that and allow bargaining on all the topics in the contract. Thanks. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Evening. My name's Mark Cooper. I live at 5811 Walden Hill Avenue, Des Moines, Iowa. I also have the honor and privilege of being president of the South Central Iowa Federation of Labor, AFL-CIO. This county happens to be one of the 23 counties within my jurisdiction. The reason why I made the trip down, trip down here tonight to speak to you folks is because, again, to reiterate what my, my brother Steve Siegel had just said, is that if you want to respect your employees, you have to give them respect. Part of that respect is honoring the contract that they've been able to enjoy for the last 30 plus years. So I would encourage you, especially, I mean, given the fact that we have an unemployment rate that is just horrendous these days, my opinion, the lower unemployment rate is bad, it's bad for people like you that have to hire folks. So if you start treating your folks badly, they're going to start leaving. Now you're going to be left with the challenge of trying to find somebody qualified to do these jobs. These jobs are important, I'm pretty sure, to this city. Another thing that's important to this city is the wages that these people make. If they, you start gutting their wages, you start gutting their contract, gutting their way of living, they're not going to have the resources to pay for the services that they enjoy in this city. City revenues are going to fall because of that. So I encourage you to please continue what you've been doing for the last 30 years in regarding your employees here in Bloomfield, Iowa. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
My name's Clint Nichols, 3202 Little Soap Road, Bloomfield, Iowa. I'm a probation poll officer. I cover Davis County. I also cover Watford County. I'm not employed by the city. I'm separate bargaining unit. There's a lot I'd like to say, but mine contract was stripped, so I'm afraid of what I can and can't say and get in trouble. But I would just encourage you to continue to allow your employees to be able to negotiate of those topics that you have in the past. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Good evening. My name is Rhonda Power. I live at 421 Pioneer Road in Des Moines, Iowa. And what I want to say to you comes from your heart. I am covered under a collective bargaining agreement that doesn't allow us to negotiate on anything but base wages. The hit that you take to somebody as an employee is an emotional heartache for people, especially people who have committed years of service and dedication to this city for you. I'm living this reality in a work environment and I'll tell you what, I was just watching a documentary on the Civil War and, and you know, the quote, a house divided cannot stand. If you make a division between yourself and your employees, that's a bond that you may never, ever recover. And you're going to get into a cycle of employees who are not personally committed, who are feeling disingenuine as, from their employer. And you're going to get into a situation like we have where I work. People don't make that long-term commitment to their employer because their employer's not making that long-term commitment after that. And you need to think really long and hard about whether you want to make that division with your employees. Thank you.
Any more public comments?
My name's Randy Tucker. I live at 420 Benjamin Boulevard in Pleasant Hill, Iowa. 50327. I grew up in Novella and I was going out. And I know I live in Des Moines now, but I feel close belonging to you people. And I get emotional because I see these communities like this and I admire you people for what you do and come in and put in all this effort and what's hard for the people of this community, which many of them probably don't even appreciate it. That's from my own experience too, so I understand that. So all I'm saying is, and I don't even know the whole deal, you can just call my brothers. But everything in these communities, we want to start stripping away everything we want to wear bones, man, I'm going to strip this stuff. You start looking at your hospitals, you start looking at your schools, you start looking at your cities, you start looking at your state workers. Those are some of the best jobs in this community. These jobs are need, these communities need these jobs. You know, we strip everything from the schools. We don't want to give any money back. You know, we all want to put it right back in our pocket and I understand that as well. But when you start doing stuff like that, it hurts these communities and these communities are dying. I don't know what you guys got, what they close all the Dollar Generals or whatever, the, the little stores, they went from Pemida, Ben Franks, went all the way down to
Talk Coop.
Chinaco or whatever it's called. And so. Well, they're bragging to build the Dollar General downtown. It's like, okay. But that's just my, when you start thinking about it, is the sense of community and all this stuff's tied together. Trying out loud, you can't figure out how to get goddamn ball field, pardon my language, ball field for your kids. You know, and everybody's all squabbling about this and that and this money. I understand, you know, you just want to throw your money around, but it's like, those are the things, the schools, the hospitals, they're little big teams where you guys grow up together and you play together and you guys have that sense of camaraderie where this is always home, this is where you live. So I'm just looking at it as, for me as an individual, I'm by a rear tire. I'm going to move, I bought my farm in Lucas. No offense down here, but it's kind of close where I grew up. So I just would plead to you to think about this entire thing. You have, just saying, this town, just play you guys above ball track up and down every time. And, uh, I don't know, I just would like to see you guys, you know, keep a good job, keep good business. All the people that think about, headed with the hospitals, schools, strip everything down to huge class sizes. We never used to have, I was a kid. And we were number one in education in the state. I remember I joined the Navy, made two entire things. You know, Iowa's number, they give me crap. Ain't nothing there but pigs and people, they say. I say, well, I'll tell you what, we all speak English and we all got high school diplomas. He's like, whatever.
More dollars over here.
Any other public comments?
Reports. Andy? Mr. Mayor, I've got two items, quick items to bring council up to speed on. First of all, you have in front of you is a budget schedule. Sandy passes that in the end of the meeting. It sets for the period of time essentially from next week through the middle of, not the end of March, when we need to have our budget meeting, just to give you a bit of an update. Sandy and I have been working on the revenue estimates. In addition to that, the expenditures that will obviously have to match. I've been communicating with the assessor's office, as you know. We should get that assess valuation report pretty soon. And when we do, that will give us a sense of what we can look at in terms of property tax revenues. Bear in mind though, the legislative provision rollback provisions, so that will be built into the formula. We are working on all those items and want to get those to you as quickly as possible. See on that schedule, there's more than a couple of instances where the regular meetings and the budget meetings more. This is another area that Sandy and I agreed to as the form, that is, it may make some sense to perhaps starting meetings at six instead of seven. It's my understanding what we've done in the past, if we've had a regularly scheduled council meeting that would be followed then by a budget meeting. I've been in cities where it's taken as little as a month and sometimes it obviously will take a little bit longer. But we'll get additional information. I think that's something Sandy and I need to work on in terms of what she's already provided. But as long as, you know, we are working on the revenue estimates. In addition to that, the expenditures. The other item I'd like to add, I, we've, I've received a couple of emails from Isaac Schrock at HR Green. I had some problems with the laptop that I couldn't communicate with him directly. Anyway, he's been in contact with me, needing to set up this, this is specific to the state sponsored projects, you may recall, the city to see. And one of the items he needs to do is a state, is a state sponsored project team meeting. I believe that's, that's part of, part of the grant. He would like to set up a time to visit with council about this, this process. I'll delve into this a little bit deeper if I can. Other than, I believe it's a grant requirement, he says it takes 30 to 40 minutes. And he invited himself to one of our meetings and I told him my fortunate one to pick was the budget and the council meeting at the same time. So I can respect the fact he does need to get down here. And I'll correspond with him further, but I first and foremost on this budget, the budget meetings, regular meetings. It's all right with council. Let me work with him on prospective dates, if he might be able to be here, if that's all right with council. And then I'll share this with you going forward. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
I think something else probably need to look into. I think we need to do a new, I think we need to talk to the gala. Hollyburg? Hollyburg. Don't we need to do a new?
There, you raised your point, the income survey.
Income survey so that we can qualify for CDV data.
That's a good point. One of the items that I know in our conversation and Danny and I had a conversation with her and that, that the timing of it has to be the item that you concentrate on because you do those surveys. You're doing phone surveys and door to door. The comment she made, I remember, was when, make sure that you're going to be in a position to, let's just say not only apply, but hopefully secure some of these grants. Otherwise, you do that income survey and it chews up a lot of time. And if you don't have a project on the spit, it's not. And if you don't have a project on the spit, it's not something you can put on the shelf and let it sit there and say, "Hey, we did an income survey two years ago." I'll correspond with her more specifically on that, because it's a pretty tight window.
I think you have to do one every two or three years.
I'll follow up on that.
Yeah, that's just, you might wanna call her and get some information on that, of course.
I'll go back.
Council updates. So all these meetings on this budget, I'm gonna start them essentially.
That's staff recommendation. One last question on that, man. Where are those budget meetings commonly held?
The work sessions we usually have out at the fire station. The regular meetings we'll still have, have the work sessions, but normally the work session, just the regular work, just the work special meeting work session we usually have at the fire station because it's just a little more relaxing, and everybody can have their own table. It just kinda, we'll have to just correspond with, I have Jeff, and make sure that there's nothing going on at the fire station.
Okay, have it done by the first of February. That's probably when we're gonna start a flooring project. We'll make it work. March. We'll open up the garage.
Yeah, there's no special meetings in March that... They'll have to be here. The ones that are in March will have to be here. Instead of beginning in February, so that...
We'll make it work.
You said the end of February, right?
I've gotta get my bids so that I can present them to the city council first, so.
Mayor, one initial question.
I don't wanna lose my money. I waited twelve years for a new floor. You declined them till March.
Mayor, one initial question. Sandy, I have a problem. We have to have budget into the Department of Management by, is it March fifteenth?
No, it has to be Department of Management by the thirty-first.
They give us fifteen or more days a year. It used to be the thirteenth this year.
But we have to have two public hearings.
Yeah, that's true.
One about the levy and then one to approve the budget.
Fine, they're all okay. When I get that information back, you'll all go, we'll know what the levy is at some time.
So my question is, still, we wanna start all these at six before we run off? Let's go to six.
Better than me. We might have to have the hammer.
Oh.
Regular meetings will still start at seven, or you gotta start them all at six?
I would start them all.
All of them. Mayor comments. I didn't get the information in time to get it on the agenda, but I talked to Wags, and he's found that, we've been looking for a brush cutter, looking for a brush cutter for quite a while, and he's found a good used one that's a couple of years old. It's quite a bit cheaper than new price. He's gonna bring some more information for us to the council meeting, but unless anybody, I mean, that's not on here to do anything with it, but it just does, just letting everybody know that.
Would that be, I know we had discussions about that, would that be in this fiscal year?
Well, I think, yeah, because, I mean, we'll have to mow before, because the other ones completely blow dead.
All right, there's another.
Because I was thinking even like this time of year, with there's no snow and the grass is down, it would be a good time to go mow, like out at Lake Fisher, because you could see the stumps and see the rocks, and, I mean, it might even be a good time to look at it, so.
How much longer is the DPW posting open?
It's closed on the thirty-first.
Did we get any application?
Yes, we received six, I believe.
I imagine that would be, not to interrupt, another item that this committee then would help us, I guess, let's work through and assign.
Yeah, they need, we need to get together on that too, because we need to, we need to get the gas job.
Yes.
We've got the applications for that. It's closed.
We need to get it.
The hiring's closed, don't we? Anybody got anything else on the council?
I guess on those positions. If we've only got one applicant or something, I'd say we need to extend that deadline. Try to get more than one applicant.
You said like six for the DPW?
Yes.
I believe you're talking about the finance.
Finance management.
I guess my question is, is there something different that we would add to the advertisement then? I mean, would you change the salary or something such as that?
I guess we can look at the, look at the resume, and I guess we can discuss it and see. I just, I know. We've never had good luck with this one.
You're right.
So you save yourself a headache. Extend the deadline.
I don't know if it does any good to extend it. I don't know if it does any good to extend, it's like, if the fish aren't biting, you'll leave your hook in longer. You need to cast somewhere else. So what I would be more, if we extend, I'd be more inclined to do that if we're, obviously, whatever advertising we're doing is not effective if we're getting one applicant, so.
That would modify it.
Yeah, what are we, what are we gonna do to cast a broader net for that particular?
I'd say we need to just send that person a letter saying that, you know, there's still can apply or reapply or whatever, but...
They need to be notified.
They need to be notified that we're gonna, we're just gonna take it out for another... What do we go, thirty days? All this stuff's getting backed up farther and farther behind you.
Do we wanna take a look at the applicants? I mean, I can see both sides of it, I guess. You have a qualified applicant. You don't wanna lose him because he extended it, and they went somewhere else. Flip side. Makes me wonder about that.
We could advertise and surround the communities.
And one of the challenges that Sandy and I talked over about this, and that's the cost component. If you were to put it, I'm not denigrating the Des Moines Register, but that's usually not a platform. Advertising positions like that, if you put an Iowa in the city, you can do that, but it's still expensive.
Well, I mean, you got ND, I mean, there's all kinds of...
ND, or Facebook page, IAMU, Iowa League of Cities. I don't know if there's specific associations limit, or dealing with finance managers, but that's like more.
Finance officers association.
Yeah.
I don't know that this would pay enough to, for someone to relocate from, say, Des Moines down here.
I do. They like it.
Maybe they do.
Mr. Mayor.
I mean, I guess I'd give Brett Henson a call too, and see if he's got any advice on it.
That's not a bad, that's a good idea.
I mean, I think I'd call him, see if he's got any advice on it.
All right.
Go ahead and number Andy.
I do.
I got it. You need it.
I would like to pick up on the comment that was made, which I think is well-taken, and that is the person that did apply, and it was only one person applying for that position. We need to reach out to that person and explain to them, other than just an email.
I think we need to probably look at the resume and go through it, look at it, and just, you know, I don't wanna just send them a letter without looking at every, you know, without looking at it. At least look at it.
I need to do them a courtesy.
Come in tomorrow. You can look at it.
Be there at seven A.
I will too.
I'll look at it. Back with you in there, be there, sir.
Thank you.
Can you email it to us?
From Nicolay.
Can't leave the office. We've got proprietary information. I could, but I'm gonna have to disclose it by myself. Jake, you wanna sit in on this?
I'll be there.
All right. Anything else from the council?
Motion adjourned. So, taking. Call my favorite. One down.
Yeah, see how many you got to do.
Twenty is what it's called. People wouldn't have your job right now. You'd be sitting in your seats. I'm gonna call security or something. I don't know. Oh, oh, well, tell me about that. What, what should?
Where?
Yeah.